Thank you. I want to call this meeting to Laura. It is April 6th, it's 6:31. This is a hybrid name, which means that we're on Zoom as well as in person. Laura's left and is in person, she's left and present. Dr. Soprano is present. Chief Russell Stevens is also present. If anyone wishes to...
Mommy!
It's not on cable.
No, no, this is a recording for later.
So I want to ask everybody to stand for a bunch of allegiance and to please remain still.
I pledge the allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Since our last meeting, one resident of Dayton has passed. Bernadette Horns, age 72, passed away on March 23rd. She was a resident of Dayton. She survived by her daughter Cheryl Stankoskis. At this time, I ask for a moment of silence. Hurry me up.
Daddy! Daddy! Daddy!
Thank you. So if all the sounds didn't apply to a little baby. Okay, so the scheduled appointments are 6:30. We have Chief Russell Stevens, both safety, I'll see when we do discuss an act. You chief of police, your job poster.
So, Chief Stevens is with us, joining us by Zoom. Hello, Chief Stevens, how are you?
Hello, how are you, Mr. Mullen, TA Mullen and Select Board? Nice to see you all and nice to see the citizens of Dayton. It's always nice to have a meeting in person at one time after this long pandemic that we've had. Thank you for having me here this evening.
So, thank you, Chief. So, as the board knows, so like in mid-March, the Chief of Police, actually the Board of Selectmen, like actually approved a contract extension with the Chief of Police for the first two months of the fiscal year, which would then prompted the need to start a process where we would plan for actually a new chief to succeed, Chief McDonald. Like, we've been working within the Board Engage Public Safety LLC, so like in mid-March, to help lead us through this process. And what, so what Chief Stevens and I are coming before you tonight with, so is the proposed Chief of Police, a proposed Chief of Police internal promotional, so internal promotional announcement, which we would post to approve by the Board tonight with the accompanying job application that was actually approved by the Board of Selectmen on January 4th, 2019. So the posting is actually based on the, based on our existing, on our existing job description. But we just wanted to also have Chief Stevens here to answer any questions about the process, explain the process and what would be envisioned in it. So the Board and the public had all the information and the ability to ask any questions they had.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you, Mr. Stevens and Select Board for having me here this evening, Selectmen for having me this evening. So basically, what the steps and the way it works out is this. And we fully understand that every community is unique. Every community and every police department have their own culture. So we truly respect that. So what we try to do when we do the assessments, especially for your particular town, we try to reach out to some of your stakeholders. We've had conversations with the town administrator. We've either spoken to, either I've spoken to in person or via text or email with the Board of Selectmen. I'm still working on gathering some more information from the Board because I like to hear, what do you want to see in your next police chief? What do you envision for your town or what do you envision for your police department? So that's important for me and the other members of Public Safety Consultants to know what you're looking for when we put this process together. So the way the process, how it looks and the way it goes off is this. So the first thing we do is look at your job description. So we took your job description, which was approved by your Board in 2019. We reviewed your job description to see what you were looking for in your police chief and what's required of your police chief. So that's in your job description, so that's what we start with. Then we work with the town administrator and we create a promotional announcement. So before you this evening is a promotional announcement. What you're, what the candidates will have to have before they can add, actually, it's an internal promotional announcement. What the candidates have to have for the requisite skills before they can even apply to the, for the position. And so when they apply, they're going to have to put forth their cover letter as well as put forth their resume. And then when those resumes come in, and we've worked with the town manager and I do have to, I appreciate all the telephone calls and the working with the town manager on a Saturday or two Saturdays to put this together. And I appreciate that, Mike, and I, it's the first time I actually get to see you, to thank you, but thank you for that.
No worries, Chief, thank you.
So we put together your promotional announcement, specific to your town, specific to your department. So that's what you have before you. After, after that's approved, the internal promotional announcement goes out to your police department. Then members of your police department who meet the minimum standards, which were in your job description, are allowed to put in for the process. And the way the process works is this. So after they put in for it, we review their resumes, make sure they meet the minimum standards required by your job description. And then we review their resumes and then we create questions. The first phase is creating questions specific to your town. So we'll work with the town administrator and we'll create questions specific to your town and specific to the position of police chief. So those will be essay questions that your candidates will have to answer in essay format. It also gives us the ability to look at their written work. You know, is there, you know, someone who's going to be police chief has to have the ability to write. So we get to see their ability on their written work as well. We get to see their ability to write. So those questions are brought in, those questions are weighted by panelists on, in Public Safety Consultants. We weigh those, the questions and their answers. After those are done, we do what we call in-person interviews. Then we will go and we'll interview your candidates and then we'll ask them questions that are specific, in an oral board interviews, we'll ask them questions that are specific to the rank of police. And these questions could be questions pertaining to what's going on nationally in the world of law enforcement, what's going on in our state and what's going on in your particular town of Dayton. So we'll work with the TA and work through the TA to work the Board on developing questions that you want us to work on to ask these particular candidates as well. After we do the oral board assessment, when we've spoken and met with all these candidates, then we create a list, we rank the candidates in order and then we pull right up an assessment of each candidate and we present it back to you through your town manager, through the town administrator, to the Board. You'll actually get a write-up of each one of your candidates, how they performed and how we see that they performed over a lot on this process. Once you get that, the, now it's up to you how you want to proceed with your process. Most of the time in towns, the BORF, the Board of Selectmen, will meet with the candidates and then you'll decide how you want to move forward after that. So we'll rank your candidates, then we provide a written description of how they did, their ranking. We present it to you through your TA and then you decide how you're going to do, how you're going to handle your promotions to keep after that. I know I kind of rattled it fairly quick, but I just wanted to get that out and see if you guys have any questions about the process.
Sure. Alex, have any questions? We don't have any questions.
And were you able to review the announcement? Promotional, internal promotional announcement?
Yes.
Okay.
It was an alack.
Okay, and, and I will say, if you do have any questions, if you want to email me through your TA, I'm more than happy to answer any questions. You guys have my telephone numbers, by all means, give me a call. I'm more than happy to talk to you at any process or any point here. You know, it's really important in a small town. And I've been a police officer 38 years, I've been a police chief for 14 years. Chief Sampson's got 40 years experience. And we do a lot of these. There's been a lot of turnover in chiefs in the state of Massachusetts. We've actually, there's been over 140 chiefs retire in Massachusetts in the last year and a half. So we have five chief processes in working right now and we understand the uniqueness of each town. I am very sensitive to a small town, I'm a police chief in a small town. I'm very sensitive to how a small town is, the small town feel and the uniqueness of a small town. So, that being said, if you have any questions, by all means, you can give me a call. Call me on my personal cell phone anytime you'd like and I'm more than happy to work with you or have any discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Mr. Stevens. I had a very cordial conversation with him in preparation for the posting of the police chief. And I look forward to working with you and hearing what you have to say after the contact with the candidate.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
We'll entertain a motion to post the police chief's position internally soon. Is there any discussion? Now, call for votes, Selectmen, fine, Dr. Z, and Kim, please. So we just voted to allow it to be posted internally, position of police chief. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll work with the town administrator, we'll have conversation and then we'll get that most, we get that posted and then we'll work with you and your community as we move forward.
So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you. I will, I'll take my leave now, take care, folks.
Thank you, I'm going to be safe.
Thank you.
So the next agenda item is the Chief Officer down, regarding two new sergeants. Can we come up here or? Yes, I just lost, my network is not available, so I did have your letter here, but I don't have the [inaudible].
Hi, good evening, everybody. Here to the Board to make the recommendation to promote two sergeants to the police department tonight. Let me explain a little bit how it worked. We had five officers went through a written exam, a I gotta run my, assessive progress, assessment process. So they went through that, it was very difficult, it was tough, it was a lot of work. So we had five that took it. After that, they were my trainer's far, yeah. I'm sorry. So, yeah, so they took the exam, they did the process. So the next thing was that I want to thank Lieutenant Rowan for what he did. He put this all together, he did all the work. So I want to thank Lieutenant for what you did. It was a lot of work, so I appreciate it. The ones that did this exam was Chief Wayne Sampson and the chief that was just on there, Russ Stevens, he did it. And they, I want to thank them for what they did. So I appreciate all the work that they did. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to make the recommendation to the Selectmen to promote Patrolman Jay McGovern, Patrolman Chris McGann to the rank assigned.
And they will so both will resume responsibilities, they will, that's already passed.
No, that's passed. I'd like to have them start this, this Sunday coming up, beginning of this Sunday.
Which is April 10th?
Yes.
So I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we appoint Christopher McGann and Jason McGovern as sergeants in the town of Dayton, starting April 10th, 2022.
Second, any discussion? Now, call for votes, Selectmen, aye, Dr. Z, aye, and Kim, Chief, aye. So why don't they both come up?
We got badges from, and all that?
We have badges.
Yeah, we have badges, no, no.
We're good on, this is not about me.
Stand, we will.
Down right part.
Sorry. We'll take some outside.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Joe.
It's always great when a town of Dayton can promote people who are continually, and it's well worth it. Very pleased that you two were more exciting. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Okay, the announcements. Annual Town Election Notice. Keep annual town election held at Dayton Elementary School on Saturday, 3:00 AM, 2022, from 7:00 AM to 7:50 PM. On the matter of Board of Police, come out and vote. What's all the [inaudible]? Give me a question.
Spring fundraiser for the Dayton Historical Society, the Spring Table Center pieces, Haridro Farm, 1522 Williams Street, on Sunday, April 10th, 2022. $40 per person, it includes all materials. Call 508-669-6988 to pre-register. Dayton Lions Club movement distribution will be held next at 8:00 AM on Saturday, April 16th, 2022, at Town Hall, lower level, 979 Somerset Avenue. Ravens vaccination day will be held on Saturday, May 21st, 2022, from 3:00 PM to 4:00 PM at the Dayton Animal Shelter, 821 Tree Monster Street. $20 cash only per invitation. For more information, call the Dayton Board of Health at 774-872-7433.
Thank you. Thank you. New business review and discuss an act on the used forest truck with elevator boom bucket contract platinum truck. See, that we received all the information that we received on this contract. There isn't. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Ferri regarding the silver truck? Ready, come on.
Mr. Ferri. Was it difficult to come? Acquire this?
No, he's Kate. You know, I already started last, right after last annual election and we learned because of the current thresholds, the dollar value of used truck and expertise of Mr. Mullen, it was challenging to find vendors that were used to this type of thing. That type of market is not use of doing the IFB, you find only that, so we come to this point.
Thank you. I asked this question because it's somewhat late in the budget. Either, you know, like a purchase, substantial purchases. There's some may question lies. But I think you've spoken well about it wasn't an easy task.
No, it was not. Mr. Mullen used to have here.
So if I let it grow, then badly.
Were there any other bids or was that the only?
That was the only one.
So you got it net with?
This was the second round, too, we advertised for this voice.
It's 2011?
2011. We called, I called various vendors throughout the country. They think procurement process in high states is scam, so it's like, it's fine.
And it's, it's only got, I'm saying it only got about 70,000 miles, something like that?
Yes.
Which is pretty good. I get it, they're unused every day, so it's not going to be a lot of mileage on it.
Right, the hours is what, where the work is, because they stay stationed where they're working. We did send our mechanic up here, New Hampshire, that's where the truck is right now. He checked it out, he operated it, he showed up unannounced, a very cold one, he started right off. There's no extra plane boom on that, all the safety stuff, ready to go.
Does the Board have any other questions? I have now, now, and similar motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the town of Dayton purchase used foresty truck with elevator boom bucket contract platinum truck and equipment from Platinum Truck and Equipment LLC for the price of $89,300.
So it's like. So, I thought it was, is it 89,472?
So, yeah, like with, so the price on the website, the difference of $172, that was, that was just change, but they already had the bid in. So, so the price that you were locked into, through the bid and through the contract, contract is 89,472 dollars.
You second that?
I do, yes.
Any further discussion? If now, call for votes, Selectmen, aye, Dr. Z, aye, and Chief, aye. Next item on the new business review, discussing act on cemetery lawn service contract called City Dune Business House. We're going to ask that this be continued, will they continue to our next meeting?
Yes, the next week, Mr. Chairman.
So, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we take this under advisement until the next, right, uh, connect schedule and Board of Directors.
Second, second. Any questions? Now, call for votes, Selectmen, aye, Dr. Z, aye, and Kim, please. Next item, see, under new business review, discussing act on the contract website post-in design, Civic Plus. Everybody have an opportunity to look at the information that was in the packet regarding this?
I have.
Yes. Any other questions regarding that?
Actually, the statement, I understand is, Mr. Gales.
Yes.
Thank you very much for all of your work and helping with the negotiations of this agreement. I understand that there were some concerns about access and your knowledge of ADA, not only bar, but of access. What is expected, what is industry expected? Was something that you were able to convince all of the people involved in the negotiations that this was doable, not a hype?
You're welcome. I will tell you in general terms, I don't think it necessarily took convincing, it just took understanding the parameters of accessibility and how important accessibility is to so many different types of disability that our current vendor is not able to support. Once I think everyone understood the different types of disability that we need to support through accessibility, it was, there was no selling involved, if you will, it was an easy understand. I will say, while I'm speaking now, in terms of the contract that you have in front of you to review, I think, first of all, in terms of what this company will provide is unsurpassed for what any company is able to provide. They have a very, very good reputation. They provide all services, not just assessable services, to a large number of state organizations in Massachusetts, other towns in Massachusetts. Roughly 80% of the towns in Massachusetts use them one way or another. They provide the assessable resource service as well to a large number of large corporations throughout the country. What I was impressed with on the accessible side is the information we were able to ask them that they were able to tell us immediately. They were able to show us how it worked, they were able to explain it, they answered all of our questions. The other part of it, I think separately, is that in general terms, the contract in the end is going to make our website visually much more pleasing for everyone to use, look at. It's going to make it much, much easier for everyone to get around, to find things. Things are going to be central, there'll be, you know, central location to find things that'll bring from there to other locations. So that everything on the site is going to be centrally located, including the calendar of events and where things are located. Forms, as I've said to other people before, we've all talked about forms and, you know, different departments want different forms to be filled out. For example, with this site, this is an important accessible tool as well. When you're filling out a form, not only will it be in the site, but it'll go directly to that specific department instantly for review. So we can create the form on the site using the tools they have. The other thing that I like about it, one of my pet peeves, is there are so many ways that things can be formatted, from Word to PDF to Google Docs and so forth. The company is going to provide a significant amount of training for all of the town employees who are going to be posting to the website on how to do it, how to make everything accessible, how to do it the right way so that everything synchronizes from, you know, point A to point B to point C. If you want to, for example, put a picture in, you're going to have to use all text, which gives you a description, an audio description. So if, if the Board of Selectmen wanted to post a picture such as the just taken, it won't post the picture until somebody types in the couple of sentences that describes what it is. You know, two gentlemen receiving sergeant badges from, like that. So that people know what they're doing. That's not just for people who are blind, that's for people who have a lot of other different types of disability too. So to me, that's an important feature. Another feature that I think is really important and makes this value well worth it is right now, there's a lot of time spent with people trying to post things and trying to maneuver things and move things around. I think what you're going to find in the end, and I think the town administrator would probably agree based on what we heard and read as well, was that the amount of work that people are going to have to do now to post is minimal. So that it's not going to be rocket science, so to speak, for some people to know what to do or how to do it. Everything's going to post seamlessly, I think, once people who have access learn how to do it. So the accessible component, which is the part, I know I've said a lot, that I'm involved in, again, they answered everything, they'll provide a 24/7 service for us if we have any problems on a Sunday morning at 2:00 AM, which we shouldn't, but if we did, they've got people who can answer our accessible questions as well, it serves the whole contract, so I'm really pleased with it.
Thank you, Mr. Gales. Dr. Z, I believe you worked on it also.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I really was impressed. I mean, I told everybody, I didn't say it publicly, but I was really impressed by Civic Plus when they did the demo. I mean, I was really impressed that they had a dedicated ADA staff member that could answer questions and didn't need to research anything really new and was well versed in not just what sort of we wanted and needed, but also what the newest technology was and really up to speed. So I definitely support this, I'm proud to support it. I think it is a big step forward, I mean, I look forward to seeing what will affect me.
Any further questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the website host and design firm of Civic Plus being hired by the town of Dayton. I'm not sure, the contract length is?
What is the contract length?
The, the contract length is, so is a, it's two years.
Yep. Begin, beginning?
This is?
It should be July 1st.
Is it?
So actually, the, the contract would actually begin now? So like a lot of our migration efforts would start now and occur over the next five months between now and September? Where they go live date of, at the end of September?
So I could say April 6th?
Yes.
Civic Plus contract beginning April 6th, 2022, and running?
June 30th, 2024.
24.
Is there a second?
The second.
So, you have a question?
No, I thi, I think I know, I think I understand. I know there's $15,000 from the grant and I know there's regular monies allotted every year to fund the, just like the platform?
Yes.
The renewal, I forget what the exact wording is.
Yes.
Just the annual fee, we'll call it. And I think that I understand how it will be paid, so I would have a question.
You're exactly right, Dr. Z.
Any other questions? Now, call for votes, Selectmen, aye, Dr. Z, aye, and Kim, Chief, aye.
Good work, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lawrence.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you, sir. Our respondents, we received an email, actually, Carrie Easton there received an email. She's the executive assistant for the planning board. Says, I'm writing to you to render my [inaudible]. Says, "I'm writing to you to render my resignation effectively immediately as the planning board representative to the community preservation committee. I'm choosing not to disclose my reasons for my resignation, not this time, it's silly, rather books." So, I'll entertain a motion to accept that resignation.
So...
Second.
Aye.
Second. Yes, second. Any discussion? If not, call for vote.
Aye.
Or do you just let them, I don't know.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
Campuchios and I. Thank you, Mr. Woods, for your...
Thank you, sir.
...being part of the community preservation committee. Uh, the next eleven, uh, that town clerk, Mike Pacheco received, "Although I have enjoyed my time as a member of the community preservation committee, I regretfully must send along a letter of resignation effectively due to various other commitments and personal reasons. I feel I can no longer devote to this committee the time and efforts it deserves respectfully submitted in doubt." I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we accept the resignation of Isabel Coller from the community preservation committee.
Second. Is there a discussion? Call for vote.
Actually, I do have.
Yes. Selective.
Um, notice that we have two resignations at a time we're getting ready for annual town meeting. There are votes to be taken, warrants to be written and submitted by the community preservation committee. Mr. Mullin, could you reach out to both the planning board and Ms. Collins, housing authority, I believe, and register them to place that on the fast track so that we can get someone on as soon as possible?
Yes, sir.
So, you don't have a court on issue?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, does anyone have further discussion? Call for vote. Selective.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
And Campuchios and I. And thanks to Mrs. Collins.
Thank you.
Uh, the next letter, the next resignation. This is also addressed to Mr. Mike Pacheco, town clerk. As of Wednesday, March 30th, 2022, I have signed my resignation as a member of the Dyke Board of Registries. Signed by Suzanne Morennes. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we accept the resignation of Susan Morennes from the Dyke Board of Registries.
Second. Any discussion? Now, call for vote. Selective.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
And Campuchios and I. And thank you for your service, Civic.
Thank you.
I just wanna go back, you just pointed out to me that it skipped, uh, the new business item B, recreation property department, I'm gonna ask that I'll entertain a motion to table this item.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we take, uh, item 7D under advisement.
The second.
Second.
Any discussion? Now, call for vote. Selective.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
And Campuchios and I. We have a letter from, uh, Fire Chief, uh, Chris McGee. Dear Board, I invited this letter to inform you that effective on April 10th, 2022, I will be appointing one new member, Sarah Desmond, to the Call Paramedic Line. This Desmond will be a Call Paramedic and come sit us to help with a lot of training and experimenting emergency medical services in nine eleven-based, based annual systems, as well as working as a paramedic in clinical settings. This appointment will add another paramedic to our staff, staff in which will assist in our coverage needs and look forward to her working in the department. Any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to contact me, signed by your chief of duty. I will entertain a motion to acknowledge the disappointment.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I motion, yes, I motion that we acknowledge the appointment of Sarah Desmond as new Call Paramedic for the Dyke Fire Department.
Still a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Now, call for vote. Selective.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
And Campuchios and I. And passes. And it's, I'll entertain a motion to approve the board's selectmen's regular meeting minutes of March 23rd, 2022.
So...
Second.
Hmm?
Any discussion? If not, call for vote. Selective.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
And Campuchios and I. And passes. The pool of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the following warrants, all dated March 30th, 2022, thirty-nine A dash twenty-two in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, twenty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents, thirty-nine B dash twenty-two in the amount of twenty-five thousand, six hundred eighty-two dollars and fifteen cents, and thirty-nine C dash twenty-two in the amount of one hundred six thousand, six hundred eighty-two dollars and seventy-one cents.
Still a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Now, call for vote. Selective.
Dr. Z. Aye.
And Campuchios and I.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the following warrants, all dated April 6th, 2022, forty A dash twenty-two in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, twenty-three dollars and fifty-five cents, forty B dash twenty-two in the amount of eighty-six thousand, four hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty-four cents, and forty C dash twenty-two in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred forty-three dollars and fifty-four cents.
Still a second.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, call for vote. Selective.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
Public input. I wanna start with, first I'll start with Zoom. Anybody on Zoom for public input? I don't think so. Public input, anybody here? Mrs. Blatt.
I'm here to advise the board tonight on some action taken by the Board of Assessors at the Adams Meeting today. We had received some correspondence relative to comments made by selectmen at the previous selection's meeting. We discussed that, and as a result of that and the ensuing effect, I'll use that word, effect, on employees in the Board of Assessors' office, the Board of Assessors has voted to send a letter to the Board of Selection citing violations to the Town of Dayton harassment policy as a result of those comments that have created a hostile work environment, that have made employees in the Board of Assessors' office extremely uncomfortable, that they feel that there was no basis, no evidence of reference to an employee that they don't know, talking about standards that were set, which would almost indicate that there were standards that were violated, which we know that that's not true. So, the Board of Assessors will follow up with a formal written letter, but since we took this action today, and we won't be meeting for two weeks, and since you have a meeting tonight, I'm just advising you ahead of time that that action was voted, and we will get back to you. And we will request the Board to take appropriate action under the provisions of the harassment policy and any state or federal laws that relate to labor relations. And I specifically refer to employees, not elected officials, from the Board of Assessors' office. Thank you.
Any... Selective.
Dr. Z.
Yes, I'm certainly not gonna comment on the action that the Board of Assessors took, as they are their own elected body. But I didn't get to share at the last meeting, sort of, just my own personal experience in working with the, just the assessors department. They've been very instrumental over the years in different things, and I'm talking about just the rank and file employees. Um, in the open space community, we did a spreadsheet, and you remember what I'm talking about, Mrs. Toregar. I mean, Mrs. Welton and Mrs. Tetra also assisted. We needed a spreadsheet for the open space recreation fund. And we needed a spreadsheet of all the open states, almost like an inventory of all the parcels. I mean, they were very instrumental and very cooperative and collaborative. So, I did just wanna share my experience and express my support for the hard work that they do, but also the way that they help the other committees and boards and officials in town. Selective.
I would like to say two things. One, first of all, and most importantly, I'd like to extend an apology to this, the head of the Board of Assessors, Mrs. Schechter, and her office staff. It was not my intent to cast aspersions or to question the job that they do on a day-to-day basis for the Town of Dayton. One of those individuals, Mrs. Turela, says that I created a hostile environment as a former student, I, I would do that. I think the world of my students and the people that work for this town. However, and I voiced this, Chairman Pacheco, the head assessor asked to have a meeting with me, and I was denied that right. My concern and criticism is with the elected members of the Board of Assessors. And I'm looking forward to that meeting with the Board of Assessors to discuss the concerns that I have. Since it is not upon the city's agenda, strongly encourage that you need, with Mr. Mullin, to schedule it on an agenda, as an agenda item for a discussion at the earliest opportunity. Thank you.
I'm not gonna comment on this one, because it's, let's get it. Who knows, where it's running up, so I'm not gonna comment on it.
May I just respond, please?
Miss, yes, Mrs. Turela.
Mrs. Schechter, it's not because of the Board of Assessors. She is the full-time employee in the office. The Board of Assessors is an elected board, and the chairman is Mr. Easterday. The reason why that meeting was denied by me is because, first of all, Mrs. Schechter was not present at the meeting when you made the comments at the selection's meeting. She is an employee of the Town of Dayton. There is a one department head in this town that would allow one of their employees to meet with a selectman who had publicly criticized the office and the people that work in it. Not one, and they aren't, I'm not talking even union employees. The reason I copied Joe McCott and the shop steward on that email when I said there would be no meeting is because you were crossing the line with employees covered by a collective bargaining unit. Mrs. Schechter is not covered by a collective bargaining unit. But as such, is an employee of the Town of Dayton under the guidance and direction of an elected board separate from the Board of Selection. We will not allow her or any other employee in our department to meet with a member of the Board of Selection who has criticized the staff openly. I explained to Mr. Mullin after the fact, I have no problem, Mr. Mullin, meeting with Mrs. Schechter or going into the office and asking for information similar to what Dr. Z referred to for assistance. But when a member of the board has made a public remark about the department, absolutely not, because it was critical whether or not you intended it. You can't take back what you said. So, the reason why we are going to take this action, and thank you for apologizing, it doesn't remove the problem that was created, and it needs to be resolved, because quite frankly, no member of the Board of Selection or any other board in this town should, should criticize a fellow board or a fellow group of employees, where there is no basis for it. So, we will follow up with it. You made this statement publicly. We will respond publicly, and since it will come to the Board of Selection, I expect it's gonna be discussed publicly, because that's the nature of it. As far as you are wanting to meet with the Board of Assessors, that's fine, we'll set up a meeting. But going forward, as I told Mr. Mullin in a subsequent meeting, and he needs information from people in the office that relates to budget or town business, there is no problem at all, because there's no political motivation there. But in this particular instance, there is no question what was brought up, with no basis for it. If you have basis and incidents, that's fine. The rest of it will be in the letter.
Mr. Pacheco.
Selective.
One, I do have many questions. We will save them for another meeting. The real unfortunate pot of this whole mess, and I apologize for my comment, and I will put that up there. I should have been a little bit more careful in my words and was more specific in stating my concern is with the elected members of the Board of Assessors. Secondly, and most importantly, Mrs. Schechter, and I have the email, it went to Mr. Mullin, requested a meeting with me. I did not request a meeting with her. And I honestly say this to all of you in this room. I am quite confident if that meeting had taken place, this issue could have been resolved quite amicably, because I have that much faith in her. Where it goes from here, I'm not so sure. I don't know what actions the Board of Assessors will take. But I stand on the fact, I can work quite well with the Schechter and the two members in that office. Thank you.
Is there any other public input? If not, we're gonna be going into executive session. We will not be tuning to an open meeting. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Number 3, uh, excuse me, 2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, heli-bation, under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Number 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal requirement to a requirement, executive session minutes, approval of the Board of Selection's executive session meeting minutes of March 23rd, 2022, and March 30th, 2022.
Still a second.
Second.
Call for vote. Selective.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
And Campuchios and I. So, we're going into executive session.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Um, will we be...
Oh, you should, you have to say you're not coming back into, to, to, to...
I did, they said, yeah.
Usually.
Yeah, sorry.
Will we be there before they come in? Just come on, just come on.
I had asked, uh, I don't know.
Yeah, for a few minutes, yes.
What?
Um, I just wanna make sure everything's okay with you now, because she just saw Don.
Yes.
And I was...
Yeah. I wanted to back off, just maybe.
I have to, too, in the old form.
No, there's, yeah, one, oh, there.
I never go over here, like, you know.
You rule.
Yeah, well, yeah, no, hopefully, there's... If this building is still around when I'm here, assuming I may, is that somebody?
It might be. Well, I'm excited about what may happen.
No, no.
Let's move on.
Hmm?
Let's move on.
Oh, geez, no.